I will call over the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was newly noticed on February 21st, 2025 through the posting and notification to press in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 19.84. How about the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, President Murray. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Kurt Krieger, the Principal of Franklin Middle School. Kurt has spent his 31-year career here at the Janesville School District. Mr. Krieger started as a physical education teacher at Roosevelt Elementary. Principal Krieger went to Franklin Middle School where he taught health and was an academic learning coach for nine years. In 2009, Kurt became the Principal of Jefferson Elementary and remained there for 12 years. And by the way, they really liked him there, too. Yeah. I just had to add that in, okay? Okay. He then received the position of Principal of Franklin Middle School. Kurt has a bachelor, a science degree from UW-Lacrosse, a master's in education leadership from Cardinal Stretch. Mr. Krieger, who do you have with you this evening?
I have Zoe Han.
Thank you. Commissioner Millard, I have Zoe Haynes and Geraldina Joyner. Can I brag about them a little bit? All right. So Zoe is a student who excels in all of her subjects. She was made, she made high honors quarter one and quarter two this year. She goes above and beyond what is required of her, and not only does she participate daily, but her participation pays, paves the ways for others to do so. Franklin and the Janesville community as a whole are a better place because of Zoe. And Geraldina is a very talented singer who participates in musicals at Franklin and Edison. You're on honors and high honors academically in school in quarters one and two. She's a great friend. She's a leader of her peers. She always has a positive attitude and is a joy to have in class and also a great representative of our Janesville community. So they are here to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consider a motion to adopt the February 25th Board of Education agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Are we going to voice vote? Sure, why not? Let's voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, nine, zero. Okay. Am I doing everything all right so far? Cheapers, cheapers. Student presenter from...
Safety message.
Ah, see?
You had to say something, Kevin.
How about the safety message?
Okay. This evening, I'm going to be talking about spring cleaning, safety tips, and advice. Examine blinds in the home to ensure they have a safety device fitted and that all operating blind cords and chains cannot be reached by children. Put household cleaning products and medicines out of the reach and out of sight in a locked, high-level cupboard or cabinet. Check that television cabinets and shelving units are securely anchored to the wall as they could fall over on children. Test smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors. If carrying any, carrying out any DIY, avoid falls from height by checking a ladder condition before use. I should have read this earlier. That was a joke. Disconnect all electrical appliances and tools before repairing or cleaning them. Always supervise children, especially when power tools and lawn mowers are being used, and tidy up all equipment straight after the job is done. Thank you.
Moving on, student presenter from Rock River Charter School. Elizabeth Nolan.
My name is Lizzie Nolan, and I am a 16-year-old junior. I attend Rock River Charter School and the Ramp Program. Before I came to Rock River Charter, I attended Parker High School during the first semester of my freshman year. The second semester, I attended Milton High School. First semester of my sophomore year, I attended Stonetown High. And then came back to Craig for the second semester. I came to Rock River Charter School in the fall of my junior year because I was falling behind in school after my dad passed away. I had to work full-time to support myself, which meant I couldn't attend school regularly. As a result, I became credit deficient and felt like I was losing track of my education. Now I attend school full-time for two hours a day with the support of two dedicated teachers. I'm catching up on my work and staying focused. They've been on me to attend every day and encourage me to push through my assignments, which has helped me get back on track. Through Stark College now, I plan to attend Blackhawk Tech in order to become a CNA. Rock River Charter has helped me stay on the path toward reaching that goal. Rock River Charter School's current enrollment is at 238 students spread between four different programs, including all ed, ramp, e-learning, and the GTO2 program. Our current waiting list for placement RRC stands at 166 applicants to date. We have graduated 82 students so far this school year, and our success rate is holding steady at 95.68%. Rock River Charter School continues to be a very successful option for students who require something other than the traditional high school setting. Rock River Charter School is working very hard to expose students to a variety of post-secondary options in the months of September, December, and January. We had the privilege of having career speakers from local companies and organizations. Our guest speakers included JP Collins, Lloyd's Plumbing and Heating, the Cement Finishers and Plasters Local 599, the Ironworkers Local 383, and the Janesville Police Department. RRCS is also hosting a college informational night on March 12th with representatives from UW-Whitewater, at Rock County, Bullock College, Blackhawk Technical College, and Gateway Technical College. In addition to the many post-secondary informational opportunities that RRCS has offered, we will also be hosting a books and bingo night for all ed students and their families. On March 4th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., this is a family-friendly bingo night where all participants will leave the, will leave with a brand-new book, as well as a chance to win baskets full of prizes and goodies. Once again, Rock River Charter School would like to extend a big thank you to Project 1649 for the generous donations towards the baskets. As you can see, Rock River Charter School continues to be an excellent, excellent place that provides amazing opportunities for students like myself. Thank you so much for your time and for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Next, from Rock University High School, Patrick Francis. Did I say that right, Patrick?
Yes.
Hey, I did something right today.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Superintendent Holsman. My name is Patrick Francis, and I attend Rock University High School. I am currently in my sophomore year, and I have been at RUHS since my freshman year. I would like to go into computer science and video game development as a career. Prior to RUHS, I attended St. William's School. I loved the small size of the school, that I knew all the teachers, and that the coursework could be customized and accelerated to my strengths. My goal in looking for a high school was to find one with similar attributes. RUHS stood out to me because of its relatively small school and class size. When I toured RUHS and talked to students, everyone told me that the students who attend there want to be there. That was the environment that I wanted to be in. My journey at RUH has been pretty straightforward. I knew what classes I would need to get done for an associate's, so I started doing them. I quickly joined the esports team, as I do love gaming, and it was fun to do it with friends. This year, I joined the new STEM club, where I participate in community math tests and also Go Baby Go, which is a program where we modify miniature drivable cars for children with disabilities. These clubs have provided an opportunity for me to develop leadership skills and give back to the community. The school offers multiple transcripted credit courses, such as sociology, psychology, statistics, and written composition. These are super useful as they get me both Blackhawk Technical College credits and experience for when I take actual BTC classes. Expectations are high for TC courses, with challenging essays and summative assignments being given out more frequently. However, it is the type of challenge that I am up for. I have six Blackhawk credits so far, and I am taking nine more this semester. That adds up to 15 BTC credits. In the next two years, I'll be taking 10, 12 to 14 credits each semester to achieve an associate of science. All of the teachers are super involved in making our education great, and that has really helped me achieve these credits. BTC representatives come to talk to each student individually to ensure that we get the best classes and experiences possible. Some of the things I would like to touch on. Our 91 students achieved a total of 287 college credits last semester. Four seniors are on track to graduate in May with their associate degrees, three in web development, and one in criminal justice. Another senior is on track to earn her substance abuse therapy certificate. Last semester, 45% of students here achieved honor roll and 10% got 4.0s. The average GPA was 2.76. The district saved RUHS families $43,000 during Semester One. So I just want to say thank you for your commitment to post-secondary education and to our future. RUHS has been great as well for its support in the academic journey of all these students. So I, as well as the students at RUHS, are appreciative of your support of our school. We remain committed to the continued success of RUHS and its community. I'd like to encourage you to like our Facebook and Instagram pages and to reach out for further information. We also encourage you to visit our school, especially during our open houses, where our students can share their experiences personally. Our next open house will be on May 1st. Thank you.
I wanted to ask Elizabeth, too, so I'm glad she's, Patrick, don't go away. Do you have family or friends here with you tonight?
Yeah, my family. Parents are over there waving.
What are your parents' names?
Holly and Jason Francis.
Holly, welcome. Must be very proud. Elizabeth, do you happen to have any family or friends here today? Who do you have with you? Come on up to the microphone and introduce your family, please. Can you guys all stand up back there so we can see you? Patrick's family, too? Who do you got there, Elizabeth?
My grandparents and my best friend.
Your grandparents and your best friend. Awesome. Congratulations, everybody, for good support. Good job. We have no citizen comments, which is good, so I don't have to read that thing again. Moving on to 4.1, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, nine to zero. Moving on to 5.1, mid-year goals update.
I brought my pen, just in case, say. Answers there. Inside joke. Want to opportunity tonight to share with you some mid-year data. Dr. DeGraff and Mr. Menewell will be helping with the presentation. I want to start by saying that our staff, whether it's classroom instructors, support staff, custodians, food service, are all working really hard in order to do what's best for our kids. And I think we're seeing a lot of very positive data. What I would probably introduce you with is that there's a lot of data that we won't summarize. We hear stories from Patrick and Elizabeth, who are making significant achievements in a lot of the things that they talked about. Won't be measured on any report card score or any internal data, but we know that it makes a difference in their lives. And I know that by having kids speak to the board, probably renews mine, and I hope it renews your belief that we have some really great kids that are really going to help this community in the future. So with that, I'm going to ask Allison to kind of lead us through the kind of K8 data that we have, knowing that in the next coming weeks, we have a lot more information coming. Our kids are taken forward in ACT assessments, and even our staff's working hard on that. And then Chris is going to talk a little bit about our secondary data and follow that up with just some other information again that probably will help us, and then I'll follow with some final thoughts and take questions. So.
All right. Well, good evening. And as Superintendent Holsman shared, you know, we want to review some of our mid-year data with you this evening, specifically in literacy, math, and attendance. We'll also share some additional data related to work-based learning and some of our extracurricular activities as well. So as we think about our mid-year data, that mid-year data really provides those benchmarks or indicators to tell us if we are trending in the right direction. Is our students growing? Are they increasing in proficiency? And we need those benchmarks and indicators along the way. We know that the state report card, as part of the state report card, includes the Wisconsin Student Assessment System. And part of that Wisconsin Student Assessment System is forward, pre-ACT and ACT. So those are the assessments that really make up part of what our report card data tells us. So we know that the forward, pre-ACT and ACT will be coming up in the next few weeks for our students. It will be a test that they take on a specific day in March as well. And so we want to know whether our data is trending in the right direction, and we are helping our students become more proficient in these assessments. We have some data that is positive that we want to share today, and that can indicate whether we're going to see that progress on the state report card. Does it indicate that it will be immediately on this text, test next month? You know, we can't answer that until after the test, but we do know we have the indicators that will tell us whether we are moving in that right direction, and we will be getting there. We also have to look at the data and tell us, you know, it's important with these benchmark and indicators, if there are trends that are not in the direction we need it to be, that we have to stop, pause, and reflect on what adjustments and changes do we need to make in order to continue thinking about continuous improvement in our district. So as we start to look at that data, our STAR reading data, which is a district screening assessment that our students take three times a year, and really, we went back and kind of looked at 2022, starting, have we made progress since then? Really, that was kind of after COVID. We've done some recent curriculum implementations. And so what are we seeing? So we definitely saw a trend up in a year or two with our winter reading proficiency data, and then we've seen even more of an increase in this recent mid-year data. So it's great to see that that trend over the last three years is really increasing, and we've taken even more of a bump this year as well. So when we break it down by grade level as well, how is each individual grade level doing? Again, the trend is telling us that all of our grade levels over the last three years have been making progress and increasing in proficiency. Some are making more progress than others, but they're all trending in the positive direction. And so continuing to look at what are the needs at those different grade levels as well. As we also look at our middle school data in six through eight, we do see some positive trends as well in our reading data at 6, 8. We know one of our challenges has been within the state report card, that sometimes we see that dip, dip between fifth and sixth grade. So it's nice to see that we have one of our larger positive trends at the middle school is in sixth grade. And then as well, we see growth at all of those grade levels. So as we start to look at our math data, we know overall, we've seen some excellent growth in math on our state forward assessment in the last couple of years with the Bridges implementation. We have now exceeded state averages in grade three through five in our math at the state level. So as we look at this data, we saw in 2022 and even in the next year, so, you know, we really weren't seeing a positive trend up or down, but we really weren't making the growth that we needed. So again, this year, the mid-year data is telling us that we've made and increased a positive trend overall in our first through eighth grade data. Again, as we break that down by grade level, again, positive trends in elementary at every grade level, with some more than others, but all grade levels are trending in the positive direction and seeing increased proficiency and growth. As we look at that middle school data, we do see growth, maybe not quite as much growth. And then in seventh grade is where we've taken a small dip as well. So that provides us some important information really on a grade level to look at and target as well. And the data's not where we want it to be yet as far as overall proficiency. So again, a continued area of focus in math at the middle school level as well. One other type of assessment that is very meaningful to our teachers are our unit assessments. So when we talk about our STAR data, and when we talk about our unit assessment data, that is the data that our teachers can use on a daily basis to see how the kids in front of them are doing in the classroom. Forward and the pre-ACT and ACT provide us important information that we need to use on our progress in proficiency as a district. But we, at the timing we receive that data back, those students have left and gone on to another teacher. So it's really hard for a teacher to make an adjustment based on that. Sometimes they can see some trends in skills or standards, but this unit data, I can see today that this group of students didn't do well on this unit assessment, and I have time to reteach and help them become more proficient. So one thing we've really tried as a system in our district is to have, regardless if I'm at Jefferson Elementary or Van Buren Elementary, my unit one, two, and three is exactly the same in Bridges, so that we are ensuring that all kids are assessed on those state-level standards at high levels. And so looking at our Bridges assessments from last year to this year, again, indicate that we are better this year than we were last year as far as proficiency with our students in math. So really, at the K8 level, overall, we see very positive trends in ELA in math, and we have a couple of grade levels or areas that we know we maybe need to focus on. Again, we know it's trending in the right direction. That doesn't mean this work is done. There's a lot of work left to do and a lot of, you know, more focus on what can we continue to get better and stronger at. So I'm going to pass it to Chris right now, and he's going to talk a little bit about some of the trends we're seeing at high school with our mastery prep data that's aligned to ACT.
All right. Good evening. I am going to go through, I'm going to start with mastery prep data, and then I'll get on to some other data that maybe aligns a little more to what our students were talking about. Mastery prep, if you remember, is aligned to the ACT, and we started using mastery prep about two years ago in a pilot to see if we thought it would work for us. Last year was the first year that we used mastery prep extensively. And then this year is the first year we've used mastery prep in a way that really aligns to how the ACT is given. The ACT is about a three-plus-hour test. In the past, we haven't been giving mastery prep in that, in one chunk. This year, we did, in our two sessions that we've given it so far, to partly just to give students an idea of what it's like for that endurance. It's the longest test they will ever take, and we talked to our freshmen, the first time they take mastery prep, it's the hardest and longest test they've ever taken in their life. So that's what mastery prep is. That's aligned to the ACT, and then we work hard to align our curriculum. One of the things that's a challenge, and folks like Dr. Beyond and our other principals lead their staff through, is our curriculum that we purchase isn't aligned to the ACT, right? That's not something that curriculum companies do. They align to the common core. And so we work really hard on finding the places in our curriculum where that works well for the ACT and where it doesn't, then we try to fill in those gaps. So this is math in ninth grade. We gave a fall administration of mastery prep in September, and then one in winter, which was really December. And you can see about a 9% increase. And in real numbers, that's about 70, 70 of our kids in the district got better, right? And improved in less than three months. So just, you know, if you put it in context of, well, who are those kids, right? When you're walking down of, you know, every, you know, every time you see a few kids, there's some there. The 10th graders made an increase as well, about 6%. For 10th grade, again, this is about a 6% increase, which for our 10th grade class is around 40-ish kids. Went from, hey, I'm at Benchmark to more students being at Benchmark. And then our 11th graders, and these are the students that will take the ACT test in two weeks, all right, two weeks from today, they will have been done. And, and as, I guess, as one of my old football coaches used to say, that, hey, we'll be in the barn at that time, right? So not as, quite of a gain here. It's about 30 students, about 4% in math. In reading, and part of the reason we measure, we are measuring reading, the ACT tests, English, reading, science, and math, and part of the reason we're measuring reading is we know it helps on the entire test, right? The ACT is a reading test, no matter what anybody else says. There's a whole lot of reading. So it's one of the things we wanted to measure. The, the English portion of the test measures a whole lot of grammar. And while that's important, that's really not where our focus is on some of our goals. So we had a very slight increase in ninth grade. And as Dr. DeGraff was talking, what we're really interested in is seeing some growth, right? Would we like the percentages to be higher? Of course, we would. But we really need to see growth, and we saw a little bit there. And then can use this data to say, well, why maybe didn't we see the growth? And where didn't we see it? And is that because it hasn't appeared in the curriculum yet, right? So they haven't been exposed to it? Is that because it's not in the curriculum at all? Is that because how we interpreted how the questions would be asked is not how we taught it? So we do use the data extensively in our groups to try to do some things. So not a huge increase, about 10 kids total in 10th grade, a little bit bigger jump in the 8% range. That's about 50-ish kids of 10th grade doing that. And then 11th grade, again, not as big a jump, about 5%. It's about 30 kids in our 11th grade class. So it's positive data for us. It's data that we believe translates to what the ACT tests. It's why we're using mastery prep in doing that, and it gives us some data, and gives us some encouraging data of, yep, we're doing some of the right things. Do we have to improve? Obviously, we have to improve, but it's, it's giving us some, some good data for us to make decisions at the, you know, all the way down to the classroom level. So some other data and areas that we just want to share with you because we know it's really important to our students. Students come to school, and yes, we want them to really be engaged in courses, but, you know, everybody in this room's been a high school student at one time, and I would imagine some of you didn't really love going to some of your classes, but loved other things about school. And so I'm going to share some of those things with you. These are industry-recognized credentials, and including a technical diploma. And what that is, is students who maybe take a class, some of our business classes, and get certified in Microsoft Word and Excel. And they have to pass an exam saying, I'm an expert in Microsoft Word and Excel. That would be an example of an industry-certified credentials. It could be our students who take our assistant childcare courses, right, and get a certificate in that. That would be an IRC. It could be our students in our Family and Consumer Sciences who get a ProSart certification. That would be an IRC, right? It also could include a technical diploma, right? And that would be some And that would be some of our students who maybe get a CNA and get a diploma through that and in doing that. So as you can see, over the last four years here, we've seen a significant increase in that. Some of that can be attributed to just us focusing on some things, making sure we're reporting correctly. And then some of it, quite honestly, is, you know, we've put some work into some of our our work-based learning and and things slide this way some. It's also some of the work that we've done in the CTE department in getting people focused on, hey, what are some things we could do for our kids? And there are ways to go about that. So we've seen a nice increase here. Youth apprenticeship, most of you are familiar with what a youth apprenticeship is. A youth apprenticeship is really workforce development and is ran through the Department of Workforce Development in the state of Wisconsin. As you can see, we've got a big increase there. Somebody in a in a green sport coat has a misnamed, it's not 2025, it's really 2024. I don't have 2025 data yet because we're not done. So it looks like that we made that increase, but we do anticipate the 2025 data, and it was not you. It was me. That it, but we do anticipate to see another increase in youth apprenticeship. And we've just changed some of the things we've done with youth apprenticeship and we will continue. We had a meeting just last week about how we can enhance our system to make sure more students are involved in work-based learning and youth apprenticeship. And then state co-ops, which are very, they're really related. It's run through DPI, not the Department of Workforce Development. I would say most students, there are some things that that there's a rigorous element in time. Sometimes that gets students to be in a co-op and sometimes it's just where it fits. So kind of had a little hiccup in 2022. And a little bit of that sometimes is is how we are making sure we're coding things in our software. But again, we've got a nice increase for the last two years there. And then the last thing I'll share with you is our athletics numbers. So this is just, you know, Parker in green and Craig in blue at the high school level. And as you can see, those numbers have just continued to rise. And we think that's positive. We know that there's certainly clear data that students are engaged in in any type of extracurricular activity are more engaged in their classes. They're more connected to school, they're more connected to their community. And it's really a tribute to our coaches and and our athletic directors and making sure that they're focused on on keeping kids engaged and encouraging kids to participate, encouraging kids to just be part of a team and learn all the things that that you can learn as part of an extracurricular that are very difficult to learn in a classroom. So just some of the of our high school data. Some of our attendance data. It looks like a huge increase, but a little bit of that's a scale, it's a one percent increase. But for us, this is really important. It's our attendance rates matters. It's kind of one of those duh things when you talk about like it's easier for kids to learn when they're in school than when they're not. So we're really happy with this. This takes a lot of effort from people and communicating with families, making sure that kids feel safe at school, making sure the kids feel welcome at school, that they want to come. Because it really is a K-12 effort in increasing our attendance rates. And we have a lot of people who work really hard on communicating with families and making sure they they, you know, value being here. And then this is sort of the opposite is chronic absenteeism. And chronic absenteeism is participating and being enrolled in at least ninety days of school, but missing at least ten of those. And so this data is lag data because we don't know this data until after the year is done. Right? Because the ninety days gets gets kind of funky in how that works. However, it's going down and and what seems weird, all the other things we'd like to see going up. We'd like to see this going down. Sort of like you'd rather have a lower golf score than a higher one. And so we would like to have a lower chronic absenteeism. And we've done some really good work there in making sure that our students are are in school more often. And we don't have students who are gone for extended periods of time. And we have to find ways to make that up. So again, some positive data that we hope reap some rewards in the long run. Back to you.
All right, so as we've had an opportunity to share some of our K eight data and our high school data as well. And we see some really positive trends, you know, with our students increasing in their proficiency levels. And so as we reflect and think about what are some of those action steps and things that are happening that we feel are contributing to helping increase this proficiency that we want to keep doing? And then we have to continue to think about what are those areas that we need to continue to improve upon? And some of these areas are just areas we need to keep further developing. So one thing over the last two years is our kindergarten through fifth grade teachers in the last two years, about ninety-five percent of them have spent sixty hours in training on phonics decoding and fluency. And so that sixty-hour training as well as other professional development around literacy are strategies and skills that they're able to apply in the classroom and use with their students. And many of our teachers are very strong teachers of literacy. But having all of our teachers have that same background knowledge and literacy strategies only benefits our students. And so, you know, we feel that that's really part of what is maybe helping see that growth in our students as well. Again, curriculum implementation, ensuring that we have a strong curriculum. We have excellent teachers and but also our curriculum resources. We want to have strong research-based curriculum so that they're not having develop to develop everything on their own or think about that scope and sequence. But we are providing them with resources to help them provide strong daily instruction every day. Something else we've been working on the last two years, K-12 is professional learning teams. So that's the opportunity for our teams, K-12, to meet weekly and to start to look at their data, whether it's that unit data or that STAR data or mastery prep data or a quiz or student work samples. So what are the skills our students are doing well in? What are the areas that are challenging for them that we maybe need to spend more time reteaching? Also, I've heard great conversations when I've attended professional learning teams of even teachers saying, well, I saw your class had really strong results or stronger than mine, what did you do? And then they'll say, well, I think I'm going to try that now and reteach. So just the power of those teachers working together and sharing their ideas to benefit all students has been really powerful with those professional learning teams. So we want to continue to build and strengthen that practice as well. Our common assessments, again, those are similar unit assessments that all of our students take K-12. We've fully implemented those for the last two years at elementary and six, twelve is working on those as well. And with those common assessments, just like I said, Forward and ACT is a little harder because they don't have those students in front of them. But these unit assessments ensure that teachers have information every five to six weeks to say how their students are doing and they can make a change in their classroom. It's useful data to them. And so that's that's also been very, very powerful with the common assessments as well. So we feel those are some really strong practices that we need to keep using and strengthening. And then continue digging deeper into what else do we need to do to help improve our students' skills and growth? Also, you know, as a district, you know, we we want to work together to help us determine what are those areas and skills and strategies we need to focus on? And what are those practices we need to implement? But, you know, we don't do this alone either. There are many different things we do that we look at outside resources as well. So we've met with CISA consultants to help us dissect that state report card and say, what are you learning from other districts that works well? Or that they're doing that they're seeing more growth than Janesville is? So that feedback's been very helpful. We've brought in external coaches that work around the state of Wisconsin or nationally. When we're talking about professional learning teams and saying, what are our teachers doing well and what do you see happening in other districts where they're getting stronger results that we can continue to help strengthen? We also have reached out to other districts who have similar demographics to us, who are performing at a higher level. You know, talked with the superintendent or directors of instruction and what are you doing that's working well? So, you know, we have a very smart and strong team from every role in our district up to our superintendent. But we also know that there are other people outside of us that are great resources too as well that can continue to help us grow. And we want to use those resources as well as our own that we have from within. So in closing, I know Superintendent Holtzman is going to kind of wrap up for us and kind of share a little bit more about some of our student excellence that we see in our district.
Closer. That's baseball turn. First, just want to say thank you to Allison and Chris and the LNI team for organizing all this data. You know, we can really dig into the data. And while Chris was talking a little bit about student attendance, I'll just give you a quick data point and then we'll provide opportunities for questions. So a one percent increase equals or one to about one thousand, sixteen thousand student days is about what that means. So when you think about how did we improve? If there were ninety-five students attended every day perfectly, that's what sixteen thousand in addition to means one percent increase. Overall, that was just about 1.7 days more attended this year than the previous year. So as we look over time, as attendance matters, and we know there's all kinds of different pieces, we know that there are great people in our organization. There's two of them behind us, behind me, have done great work, providing great development. And so we know that what makes a difference in the lives of kids in the classroom, elevated student achievements, is great educators or great teachers. That's the number one influencer. But we also know what is significant is great leaders. And leadership matters and trying to provide manageable resources and data so that we can review what we're doing and take a look at that. And then I would also communicate that there are so many amazing things happening every single day in our school that aren't going to be measured necessarily on a report card. But yet they are really, really important. And again, hearing from students here, I think I know I feel really good about the stories that we hear, the resilience, the accomplishments that happen. And that's hopefully part of the reason why people do work in the school district of Janesville is to make a difference in the lives of kids. And so ultimately, we're using data to try to improve the outcomes of kids and we're showing some of those things. But we also know that we have reason to continue to grow. And so that continuous improvement process is something that we're dedicated to and we aren't going to slow down. We want to definitely keep the momentum moving forward. So I'll pause there and see if there's questions for Chris or Dr. Giraffe or myself from any of the board member.
This is really, I think, a lot to pack in and I really appreciate seeing it all because these are goals that we've been talking about. So this is great to have it condensed. I am kind of thinking about the math data. I'm looking at this one, STAR math, percent proficient, grades one through five. And it's so awesome to see this growth. And I I'm just reflecting, you see how fourth and fifth is a little bit lower even for, you know, the orange? Those are kids that were in, they were, these were COVID kids. These were COVID, P4J and kindergarten kids. And so the younger kids weren't in school yet. And so when we're looking at this and we're thinking, well, why is fourth and fifth grade? If they have this curriculum, why, why is first and second? Well, we have to remember even nationwide, they're saying that we're still seeing those effects of COVID. So it's important, even though it's kind of moved away and we're no longer debating things, those kids, their learning was impacted during those times. So it's important for us to reflect on that because we're still hearing about it. I'm going through because I made some notes. I I am looking at the one that had to do with attendance. So with chronic absenteeism, those, we get marked on, yeah, that's the one. Our state report card, this really impacts us, right? So I'm seeing, it is so nice to see that trend going down. And state report card, it's like a rolling three-year average. So last year or 2023, 2022, 2023, which still would have been reflected on the state report card. What is that twenty, is that over a quarter of our population was chronically absent?
Yeah, so actually, the report card attendance is in rears. So this coming state report card will be evident on the 22.5. Because if you think about that, this is how the state report card goes. But to your answer to your question, what that what that means, a chronic absenteeism, someone who's been in attendance ninety days, at least half of the year, over the entire year. And then we're looking at 10% or more absence. So it's about seventeen more than absent, more than seventeen days in a year. And so that would tell you that 25%, more than 25% of our students missed seventeen or more days in 22, 23. And we've reduced that to 22%, but we're still talking about one in five kids misses more than seventeen days of school.
Yeah, and I I just really wanted to highlight that for anyone watching and for the board to recognize that we, that shows up on our state report card. That's a lot of people who are not showing up to school, yet we are accountable. And we can't physically go and bring them here.
And we have done many, many things to try to improve that. Our social workers and administrators are working on that. We have a partnership with the city to provide free transportation through for sixth through 12th grade. And that, I believe, has helped as well. If you've been on the bus turnstile, you'll see a lot of kids on the bus, positive. But yes, that's a system and a community organization that we just have to help. And so communicating that and making sure we're letting people know we need be in school is important.
Yeah, so it's so good to have this in here because I think it's really palpable when you see it and like, wow, that's a, that's a lot. So everyone who's been working on helping to solve that, that number is going down in good ways. So that's wonderful. And then I am the very end, or if I can get to that, the action steps. There's a lot of heavy lifting. So the ninety-five percent, they they did the AIM training, that's correct. And I know that ninety-five percent of our elementary teachers have had that. That's substantial work and effort from our district to have. And and is it only K three we were required?
Well, we require, the state requires K three, but our leadership determined it would be best for K five because it is likely that you will have somebody who is in your fourth or fifth grade who has third grade reading scores. And it's possible that you teach fourth grade this year and you might need to teach third grade next year, so.
So we're not doing the minimum. We we went the extra mile. And I, that's why I wanted to point out. So thank you to all the teachers. I know this is really hard, heavy stuff. Thank you to everyone who took the time to do that training. I've spoken to some teachers and they've said, oh, I didn't want to do it. But oh, my gosh, it's so helpful. And, you know, curriculum, to implement new curriculum, that is a lot of work across the whole district. I know the P, the PLTs, that's a lot. And it's been challenging and teachers have had to, in some cases, kind of give up some of their planning time in elementary school. They have to do that after school because they don't have that planning time during the day. So I just, I really want us to recognize that this is a huge effort from our entire school district to be doing these things so that we can move forward. Thank you for everyone. We don't always recognize, because it's not just, they didn't just do this training. They didn't just do curriculum implementation. They didn't just adapt professional learning teams and they didn't just start doing this new comment. They did all of those things in a short period of time. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
So I'll focus on the youth apprenticeship slide because that was my favorite. So I just want to recognize that the district and the board made a decision to invest in a work-based learning liaison a few years back to improve the numbers. So if you look, I'll say 2024 because the graph is wrong.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But if you just look between the two years, I know across the state that 2023, 2024 academic school year for youth apprenticeships saw record numbers of students doing youth apprenticeships and a record number of employers participating in youth apprenticeships. There's a huge talent gap across many different sectors, whether that's manufacturing, IT, healthcare. So to be able to see that growth from thirty-three to seventy, that is like over 112% increase. So I just want to recognize that, you know, this isn't an individual recognition, but Erin must be doing something really well, Erin O'Leary, because she's seen, she has shown and I'm sure a collaborative effort, over 100% increase in one year for youth apprenticeships. And that's very significant, not only for the program. And that's very significant, not only for the program, but also for our community. So, when we're talking about workforce shortage and workforce development, our school district is moving the needle on that effort. So, I just applaud the investment by the board to invest in that position as a district to help our community and our workforce to grow stronger.
Thank you. I just want a reminder of when the new curriculum, like Bridges was first implemented and the reading curriculum, you know, Wonders.
So, Bridges was implemented in, let's see, 2020. It was during, when we were coming back from, we were off for COVID that spring and that fall.
Right.
So, that was really a heavy lift on teachers and they did an amazing job during that time to implement a curriculum. And then we're, this, we're in our third year of the Wonders curriculum at the elementary level.
Okay.
So, just over two years.
Kind of piggyback then on what Liz was saying too. So, not only were they COVID people, but they also didn't, the, they didn't have the benefit or the, as much experience with these two new curriculum. And, and it'd been a while since we had updated our curriculum. And, and really it made an investment in curriculum. I, I was surprised when we started to change that. And, and by the way, when you change a curriculum, it's not instantaneous. Nothing is instantaneous. If you think something's going to happen in education, one day to the next, other than maybe a change in student behavior from one day to the next, depending on whether they had breakfast, you're, you're, you, you don't know, you don't know. And so, it takes a while. And it takes a while for faculty to adapt and to learn it because they have to learn it too. And it takes a while for you to start to see some traction. And I really appreciate, and I, I've been through a few curricular changes over the years. And honestly, sometimes as a teacher, you know, you're kind of like, oh my gosh, another one, you know? And I wanted, I just wanted to thank you for the diligence that, that you went through to find a good curriculum. You know, something that could really produce what we want. And because there's a lot out there to choose from and, you know, and some of it is not very effective or maybe not very effective in our, you know, situation. And so, it takes a long time to do that, takes a long time to implement it, and it takes a while to see results. And I'm really glad that we are seeing some results and, and benefits when you, especially when you look at the, some of the scores and the improvements in like the first grade level in reading. That's really good to see, so.
Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate that. And you've been along with us at PPC and that journey as we've been implementing those. So, I appreciate that. Something I just wanted to, to add to, to, you know, we talk about we get, getting feedback from others. One thing that's been really helpful is bringing in teams of teachers to get feedback, especially about Wonders. And they've had some really honest, helpful feedback that we've been able to make changes and adjustments and we're still doing that. There isn't, you know, there is not a perfect curriculum, you know, or everyone would have that one. But so, you have to help align it to the needs of your district. And so, I don't want to lose sight that that stakeholder feedback is so important and that part of that success is that they've been on this journey and been able to tell us what, you know, maybe needs to be changed or adjusted to, to meet the needs of the students in the classroom.
Well, and I think that that is, you know, indicative of, of good leadership too, is that you're listening to the people that are, you know, in the trenches and are actually doing the, the kind of work. So, thank you all very much.
And also, sorry, to add one more thing, something else that the teachers have recognized too in our building leadership is that even our paraprofessionals need more training with these resources because they work with the teachers. So, we've seen, especially, we had a recent PD that was specifically for pairs on literacy strategies. And we had over 30 sign up, you know, just for the first session. And, and then we have, are having another session because of the success with that, so, yeah.
So, if we want to go baseball terms and closer, sometimes they have to be the fireman? So, I got to come at a little fire and just a little bit. So, as we look at, and I'm thinking of the, if I have a student and maybe has disabilities or some other way of segmenting the data. And I see this and I'm like, man, that is not the experience that I see with my child. So, can you speak to that at all or is there any thing? Because the data looks like it's improving, but then I know when we look at the report card and we dig in there, the segmented data really drives the report card, so.
So, I'll talk a little bit about how, when you talk about segmenting the report card, one of the things and all of our principals would be able to articulate this quite clearly. We have talked about in the report card, the target group matters to us. The target group is your lowest 25%. And on the report card, the, the target group counts twice, basically. So, the, the group you're talking about of that's not the experience that my students having? Yes, we, 25% of our students, 25% of students everywhere, right, are in the target group. Doesn't matter how high you're performing, there's a lower 20, there's a lowest quartile, right? So, we have really worked hard on that. Allison talked about bringing in some outside consultants. One of the phrases that one of our coaches used that I, I think we picked up on is, we need to name and claim our target group. Like, who are those students specifically? What's their name? And what, what is something that we can help affect? Some of the students do have IP. Some of the students are students with EL labels. Some of the students are not. You know, at some of our high schools, some of our students in the target group are in AP classes. But they're still performing low and, right, we're kind of looking at that. Well, how can that possibly be? But I think it's a good question or, or comment, I think, Greg, in that we do need to pay attention to those things and we are. I will say it's probably the most challenging part of us examining the report card and how, what we can do to improve. Because those students need something more or something different or something else. And for us, it's like, what is that? And so, I don't have a great answer on, well, this is exactly what we're doing other than we have identified our students. We've identified that we need to look at how they're performing. Is it their attendance? Is that a problem? Is that what we need to address? And then what is it we need to do? Some of those students end up in tier two or tier three interventions, knowing that they do not have the prerequisite skills to be successful. So, I'd like to say, you know what, we're, we're going to fix everything in our, our target group and, and everything will be great. But I, I know that's not true. I do know that we're paying attention to it and more so than we ever have. We've broken down data. We've, we've broken down some of our, our next path charts. So, they're easy to see and identify. Excuse me, identify which students don't have attendance problems. So, those are the students who are already coming. So, then we start talking about will versus skill. So, I said a lot there in about two and a half minutes, maybe three minutes. I don't know if that's the, is it the one you're bringing the lefty? Is it the one you're bringing the lefty, long relief? So, I don't know if that answers your question, Greg, but it's a good question. There's, there's another group and, and we are paying attention to that group.
Well, I just simply know what we pay attention to, then that stuff gets highlighted and we work on it. So, that was really where the question was coming from. So, I appreciate your answer. At least we know that who those bottom 25 are. And yes, they do get counted twice.
Yeah, no, and I was just going to say that was some of the feedback when we kind of dissected our report card was that you, you know, the emphasis on really paying attention to that target group of students and how are we identifying their needs and addressing those. And so, I agree. That's definitely what has probably challenged us the most on the report card is that target group. So, now we have to put that in the forefront of what we're paying attention to.
Sure. And to my fellow commissioners, I did a pre-convention workshop and it was really about the report card. And really one of the highlights is exactly what they're talking about is paying attention to the target bottom 25 regardless, because they could be high, but they're still the bottom 25. Whatever's good for them is good for all of the students. The other piece on attendance, let's celebrate the wins where they're at. I'm serious. I mean, we, we can talk about the chronic absenteeism, but many of the students come to school every day. And what I would like to see is let's celebrate it. So, the building leaders develop a plan to celebrate it. And my thought is if you're celebrating wins, then maybe other kids may want to be on the winning side too. So, just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, presentation on the Studer partnership.
So, I wanted to provide the board kind of a big picture overview as we talk about our continuous improvement process and this organization for excellence. You just had an opportunity to hear about a lot of things that we're doing well. And we have staff and leaders doing amazing things on a regular basis. And we have many things to celebrate. There's lots of things that we can acknowledge that are going well. But we also know that within our system, we have areas that we need to continue to grow. Last year, we organized a group of lots of people and we came up with a strategic plan. And that strategic plan helped us kind of guide these three kind of powerful words that talk about inspire, power and achieve. And we always, you probably can't get enough of that. What are they looking at? Because that's really kind of an amazing story. And how do we engage those kids into work? That vision then for educational excellence is, is as complicated it is, it's really simple, right? We want academic excellence, we want staff excellence, we want an operational excellence and we want family and community collaboration. And so, as we look at today, what we're looking to do is really kind of organize our system a little bit more. And, and I think we've tapped many different resources in order to improve our organizational system. You've heard us communicate a little bit about sale and how we've used that in these 100-day plans to review our internal data, specifically student data, in order to improve our academic performance. We've talked a little bit about how we've used SolutionTree to look at our multi-systems of support for students, those interventions that we had. We've, we've, Allison talked about how we've brought in CISA to look at some at-risk pieces and also our report card and what are some other areas that we can gain. And so, I think we, in looking at that, we, I continue to think that sometimes it's helpful for us to have a partner and a partner who helps us look at some things that maybe we're missing and helps us kind of organize our thoughts and communicate that. I do know that our staff continues to be amazing. And I don't want anybody to think that the move that we have to partner with another or an outside group means that people aren't doing really good work. But what I do want to do is share that Studer as a partner can help us gain some positive momentum with our goals. We saw if we just use some general, some 2% gains across the board. And we thought, saw some like 38 to 40 to 42. And those are appreciable gains, but we're also talking about how do we gain some momentum? How do we make sure that over the next year, two, three, five years, that moves from 42 to maybe 52? And in the process, how do we continue to make sure that we're communicating about the things that we're doing well and making sure we're continuing to make sure the main thing is the main thing? And that is student outcomes. So, when I look at the partnerships that we've had, I know that our partnership will not change our reading, math and attendance goals. Like, those will continue to be where we're at. The tool we use to measure those will continue to be our internal data that you saw. And in the end, it will always be the state report card, the Forward Exam and the ACT. Those are our windows that the community sees. But we also know that there are other tools and kind of dashboards that we can create that help us tell our story about the achievement we're making. You know, the, the example I can give you, and you've seen this before and you've heard this before, but only 10, less than 10% of the district's report card in this upcoming school year will be on student achievement. Now, we make gains in student achievement, but less than 10% is going to be on our student achievement because over 40% is going to be on student growth. And student growth is hard to put a pin on because student growth is not just how you've done, but it's how you've done compared to how everybody else did. And I don't know how everybody else did. So, I'm kind of paying attention to ourselves, but we're measured by ourselves and our growth compared to others. We talk about the bottom 25%, right? That's counted twice. Well, attendance is a piece of that, right? We know that daily attendance matters, but chronic absenteeism is a piece that is in elementary area when you look at their growth towards graduation and it's also in the attendance area. So, we have some opportunities to kind of look at that dashboard piece. There's some other things that I think that we can do and that Studer can help us with and that's systems. So, when we look at our systems, we've done, we did a staff survey last year, presented that results of staff survey. But historically, we should be doing more feedback from our community, from our parents, from our students and from our staff. And then that's another tool to say, how are we doing? What does our staff think and how we might look at that? We also know that Studer has helped districts across the nation provide supports and improvement processes. And that's something that we're looking for somebody who has had success. And prior to looking through this, I've talked to four different superintendents who are using Studer and talking to them about the process that they do to develop. In addition, I just want to acknowledge that the district has worked with Studer in the past. I think back probably more than a decade ago, we were one of the first school districts who worked with this strategic framework. And since that time, it's evolved. And the evolvement really, as I worked with our directors who had been here before, really stems around an operational system that provides a dashboard and strategic achievement towards that and not competitiveness within and against. And so, what I want to be able to communicate to you is that this is a new model. The model is something that they've been doing for a period of time, but it's a little different than what we've seen in the past. There was a, for example, a LEM, they call it Leadership Evaluation Model, that where there was model that they had to evaluate growth for our leaders. That's not part of their system anymore. And we also had some principals talk to us a little bit about the survey. And the survey was specifically staff giving feedback on the administrator. And, and now the survey is about how I feel. So, I feel I have the tools, for example, is one of them to do my job. I feel I get positive feedback from my leader, not my feeling towards the leader. So, there's, there's some different strategies within that. And then I think there was some feedback about there's a, a mechanism to, and we use a term, get rid of people. And it's always a growth model. Our goal is to try to support people, to make them to be the best they can be. We know that the pool of candidates that we have on today's market is different than it was a decade ago. And we got to grow people. We want to make sure that people want to continue to be here. So, I think that just kind of gives a big overview of like the why. From there, you know, again, this is a simplistic kind of model, but we take those aligned goals. We talk to our aligned processes and then we have the aligned behaviors. And hopefully, they link in order for us to have this continual improvement process. And it's not significantly different, I would say, than what we've done. We're not going to say we're going to change everything because there's a lot of great things going on. But we do want to be able to have some regular measures. And some of those regular measures you'll see that would be on that, would likely be our internal data, but not just student data. It would be staff data, it could be operations data, it could be financial data. And so, we've yet to build the dashboard. That's something that we'll work together to talk about. But again, that would be kind of the big piece. And again, what we're trying to do is just partner so that we can, in, in provide this great outcomes for our kids and for our staff. I go back to our core pillars. We talk about student excellence, staff excellence, operational excellence and partnership. In general, great place to learn, it's a great place to work and a great school for our community. And we want to make sure that we have those systems to facilitate all of those pieces and be able to measure that in a dashboard as opposed to right now, our forward dashboard is only student achievement. And right now, it's only measured on a state report card. And we know that that varies within that and it's not necessarily a comparison. We want to improve on that, but those are some of the things that can help. So, when we talk about, you know, what does this look like? I've talked about that scorecard kind of defines those outcomes for us to achieve. We cascade the same way we've done it before. So, our reading, math and attendance will cascade all the way through in our. And our elementary, middle school, and high schools will all have the same goals. How they measure those will be similar, but their growth is going to be different. What we expect at one elementary school might be a little different in terms of their growth, but we know that we want them to grow and improve. We want to have those outcomes on student success measures, workplace engagement. We're not service excellent and stewardship. We talk about customer service, what our parents feel like, what our employees feel like. And then again, at the end, they engage in this continuous improvement, short cycle conversations. That's the same as we've done before. We talk about those short, sort, short, excuse me, cycle reviews for measurable progress. And again, looking at what's working and making sure we're celebrating what's working and then identifying what's not and determining those actions to improve. Not significantly, I mean, you heard a lot of those, but I think with a partner and someone as a coach helping us maybe look over our shoulder and give us some feedback will help us continue to gain that momentum. Again, when we talk about our mission, it's no different than what we've talked about earlier, but we want to partner with those families to, to inspire all students to achieve at their highest level. And I think we are moving in that direction. And I'm hopeful that partnership with Studer will allow us to continue to move in that direction at a more rapid pace so that in the end, our outcomes are celebrated on a regular basis. And when we have areas that we need to improve, we're able to focus on those. So from the board's perspective, I always want to make sure the board kind of has an understanding like, well, I count my involvement. So we would be able to provide those short cycle review updates to the board. I want you, hopefully, to be able to engage these meaningful conversations about the focused actions we're taking to achieve those district outcomes. So, you know, we're going to have some evidence areas and those evidence areas to recognize what's working well. And we want you to be able to give us some feedback as we kind of build this dashboard and we'll kind of work through that short cycle and talk about what we're going to pay attention to. But to Commissioner Ardey's point before, what we pay attention to, what we measure will matter. And so we can't pay attention to everything, and that's why we have those three goals. But what we do pay attention to, there's different pieces within there, I think, that can help us improve. Our core values, again, we talk about that collaboration, critical thinking. We heard about resilience today because our ninth graders have to take a three-hour test that they've never taken before. That's resilience, right? That's something that they have to kind of get through and we have to work through that. We see that picture of kids and curiosity. We know about empathy and the idea about we're trying to provide opportunities for all kids at all times. And there is going to be a lot of times where we have to have empathy and passion for kids. So when we talk about the role of the board, we want to make sure that you'll have that right information to make good financial steward's decisions. So hopefully, if we're coming back to you trying to create a staffing plan in the future, probably not the one in March, but in the future, they will all be aligned to where our goals are and what we're achieving. And if we're not quite making it in places, we're going to have to make some adjustments within our system, not necessarily go to the board and say, we need more money. We're going to say, we need to spend our money differently. And so trying to give you some power to be able to help us with that. And then understand that I always want the commissioners to be in the know. Why are we making decisions and what progress do we have for that? Again, that's really important for us to be able to make sure that you feel comfortable about how we're moving forward and what that looks like. And again, I think there, there are some opportunities for you to be able to be part of that, that process. If you're familiar, I know there's some board members who've been here before. You talk about those nine steps. And again, when you talk about the commitment to excellence and, you know, we can talk about measuring the important things. We can go through the whole list. But those are two key principles that are just quality for leadership development. So the first thing that we would do within our system is we're going to establish those standards of excellent team. It's going to be the directors, maybe a few others, just to try to establish, what are we going to do? How are we going to collect and analyze that data? We're going to talk about what surveys and what questions we want to ask from our, our staff. We're going to find that draft and send that out to our people to kind of have for them, take a peek at it. And then we'll submit that to myself and to the executive team, and then we'll present it to the board. And again, this is going to take some time. So we're probably looking at an August timeframe to represent that final authorization and approval of our, our goals and dashboard to the board to make some tweaks between now and then. So it's going to take a little bit of time. And we're going to drop everything we're doing now and then jump on that. But our first meeting and just kind of get ourselves organized officially would be in March. So I'll pause there and just share with you, I think last week I shared this kind of a overview of what a dashboard, and again, I, I came across this, it's a different school district uses this dashboard, but they picked eight or 10 school districts who were like them. And what I saw on the dashboard was that when you talk about academic performance from students, Janesville was in the top three. And when you talk about student expenditures, Janesville was in the bottom three. And we just don't pass that message to our community as well. This is, this is not our slide necessarily. I just took the district off. And this just happens to be all students percentage, I think, fifth grade math. And you know, you can pick anything you want. And you can see where Janesville is compared to others. We just have to do a little bit better job, in my opinion, of telling our story because the report card wouldn't share that information. But that information is brought up from another district. And I'm just showing to you, we're doing all right, right? In, in some of those areas. Now, there's other areas we have to continue to grow, but that's an example. When I talk about what the power of being able to focus on a few things and show a dashboard that looks a little bit different, that's something that I thought would be interesting for the board to see. I will pause there and see if there's any questions that commissioners have or anything that I might be able to provide.
Thank you. I sent my questions to you ahead of time, and I, so I just kind of want to go through them a little bit. So how much is this, if we're going to do this? How much is it? When does it start? How is it paid for?
Yep. So the dollar amount is over, over a year. So we, I mean, we can do it one year, two year, three years. It's $82,000 for a one-year kind of renewal. We have had really good conversations with our Forward Janesville Foundation. And we're going to be able to communicate some in the near future, probably in the first week of March, public partnership that they're going to help support financially the district's movement going forward in this partnership.
And when would it start?
March, we would begin the work in 2025. And, and again, the, the contract, I think I forwarded all the board members a little, a while ago, the contract. The contract does give a 30-day out if you want it, but we're, we're looking at not a single year, but a multiple year renewal.
Okay. And I was here when we had Studer before, so I am familiar. Did we look at any other similar kind of third-party companies to partner with?
So over the last probably year and a half, Dr. Graff and Chris and I looked at a couple of, one was from Virginia that we looked at. Another one was Solution Tree, which has a very formal, like kind of strategic plan model. We've been with our sale group, which is the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators Improvement Model. And we've also worked with Solution Tree. So those are really the three areas that we really looked at. And we continue to come back to this Studer as an opportunity for excellence.
Okay, two more questions. Can you, you had mentioned that when I asked for actual results of districts who use the program, their growth and how long it took and that kind of thing. Can you follow up and ask them for like some examples to send us?
Yeah, I will. And again, I think there are, there's four school districts. I talked to actually one in Arizona. I've talked to Chippewa Falls and Altoona, their internal, Menominee Falls. So if you go to their website, you can see there's a way to, I think it says about us. And there's a link that has all the school districts they work with. If you go to Wisconsin, there's a number of them. But they don't share on there specifically what their growth is. It just says that they work on them. So I'll try to get that specific information from them.
Yeah, like the kind of the value that they got. And then lastly, I know when we had them before, I thought there was that teacher evaluation model. And we went away from it because everybody was scoring like super high. And I, that is an area that I think I would like to learn more about, either what we're doing or what we could be doing for evaluation of teachers to just ensure the, you know, the quality teachers, you know, not, not only, you know, tenure, but really it's how, you know, how effective, the effectiveness. So I think you said that they don't have any tools for that anymore, which maybe, so maybe separately, we've.
Sure, I can do that.
I would like to learn.
I mean, I, I think that might be an opportunity in the future at another board meeting or PPC meeting. You know, the, the state requires us to do teacher evaluations, and there's a couple of different models you must follow. So we follow that. And there's an online process that provides, you know, every three years, teachers have to be evaluated. There's a, it's a cycle that our principals have to do, how many times they have to do observations, what's the walkthrough looks like, what the feedback. Our new teachers have to be evaluated every year. I mean, there's, there is a requirement that we follow. Kim and Allison and Chris really work with our building principals in that regard. So, I mean, that's a different piece, that evaluation, than this continual improvement. And I think what we were talking about before, when I was speaking, was a leadership evaluation model. They called it the LEM, which was for our administrators. And that's not part of what they do anymore. And that LEM was aligned, aligned also with some financial incentives of which I think for a period of time we did, and then we went away with. And so that's just not part of their model anymore.
Yeah, there used to be, it was, I, I thought it was Studer, but it was some like five-level teacher evaluation. And but, but what we found is like truly, I mean, everybody was scoring in like the highest. So it was like, you know, and you know, that can't be true. So anyway, so totally separate. I'm very thankful. I think I'm willing to try it. I want us to get better. I'm glad we're learning from others. You guys had a great presentation on the growth. This is such good work. And thank you to Forward Janesville for helping. Their partnership means a lot because, you know, knowing that they're going to help us along too and be an advocate is, is a huge deal. Thank, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. The, the, there will be a form or communication, but again, their keep kids learning model that they help support us through the referendum process, their foundation, they're continue to be committed to partnering. And, and they feel like they want to continue to provide excellence for our schools and our community. And, and we're grateful for that support.
Thank you. So you mentioned some of the other things we do like sale. So is this in addition to sale? Is this, I mean, bringing back this process, is it, does it, is it another layer over sale? What is this?
So for our elementary folks and for, this is the last year, so sales is like a two-year process. And so I don't want to say we're going to disregard all the work, but we're not going, you're not going to hear about us attending sale meetings anymore. Like this will replace.
So this, it's like, it's like its own curriculum and you, you went through the process of it and.
So sale is a, is a continuous improvement model and, and I think fair. And in many of our areas, it's worked. We had, three years ago, our secondary schools went through a two-year cycle with sale. The director team and myself went through a two-year cycle with sale. This is the second year for elementary. And again, I would tell you that we've seen some gains and sometimes inconsistent gains, but not universal. And so we're looking for an assist. And so we're going to say, thank you, sale. There's some great pieces. We may continue to do that, but that's not going to be, we're not sending people to sale anymore. And when we say curriculum, it's really a, it's a leadership model. I mean, there's going to be feedback and opportunities and a coaching model, but I don't know that, that I would say there's a prescribed curriculum. It really is us, we end up creating measurement tools to look at our own data, the things that we say we want to pay attention to right now, reading, math, and attendance. But it might also be staff, you know, supports. It could be behaviors, whatever those things are, we're going to measure those. And then we're going to use that short cycle to make sure that we're making gains on those. So it's a model, maybe a structure, way of doing things, maybe different than a curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I will chime in here. I'm encouraged, number one, I would say. But the number one thing, I guess I would say, since I've sat here, Kevin and I, pre-Studer, around one, and now it is for us to own it. I mean, part of the issue, in my opinion, is we tied it to Studer and we never owned it. So, and we mentioned sale. Well, it sounds like we own sale because that wasn't what we talked about. We talked about the product, not the program. So this is just, we need to own it and make sure that we make it ours, whatever it is. And Studer sits in the background is just helping us through that. That's my only comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. If I would just quick comment, I did ask when we were evaluating, what happens to those school districts who aren't successful? Like what are the things that you see? And there's two comments. One was that the superintendent and the leadership team didn't believe in it. And two, the board didn't support it. So those were, again, we, we can come up with anything, but if our team and myself can't support it, it's fine, I, you know, it'll go really well. And if the board's like, yeah, you're not asking about it, or you know, then they said it's, you know, it will go, this too will pass as we kind of talk about it. But we're trying to think about a way of doing things, right? A way of organizing our thoughts and a way of measuring things, this continuous improvement. So I'm looking forward to it. And again, I would tell you that I've vetted this with our leadership team. We've had one-on-one meetings with the leadership there. The director team asked some very poised questions. I got some questions from our building principals, gave those questions back. So we're continuing to evaluate, to make progress. Thank you.
Moving on to 5.3, how about a motion to approve resolution authorizing issuance and sale of not to exceed 12,500,000 general, general obligation, promissory note, serials, 2020. Motion, a second. We'll do a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that passes unanimously, 9-0. 5.4, how about a motion to approve resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed 139,300,000, general obligation, promissory note.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, that passes unanimously. 9-0, you're welcome. 5.5.
Yeah, I'll talk more about those during the committee meeting. But so first of all, I appreciate being the delegate to the convention. It's always a great experience to talk with other board members around the states, their successes and failures, and really get a sense of where we're at. And I always come away going, we're good, could be a lot better. But we're better than many. So that's kind of how we come away from that. Now, as we get into the delegate assembly, some may go, what's the purpose? And the purpose is, is really to advocate for the schools, for the students, for the students, for the students. And, and we look at how do we do that? It is really legislative advocacy. And it is to share, here is a collective view of the school boards around the state and say, here are the things we find important. So legislators, pay attention to that. So as sort of a piece of that, as much as we have connections, whoever are state legislators, let's connect with them. My new state representative here in our district, Dan Rowe, I happen to know her well enough and talked to her and asked her if she wanted to understand school financing well. You're not going to understand it that quick, but she was willing to come in. And fortunately, Mr. McCray had some time and really sat down and at least give her a basic understanding of nothing else, the questions to ask and what are the priorities to look for, to advocate for us. So that's really kind of number one. Number two, if we want to get into the minutia of the actual resolutions that were passed, it was four hours just of sitting there. Unfortunately, the normal electronic system that we normally have wasn't working. So that added probably an additional half hour, 45 minutes of timing. But so 10 of the resolutions were really passed, and some of them were just amendments to previous resolutions. I have a list of all of them. I'll highlight them, sort of the, the big ones here. And one of them was the WAB supports all 20 of the recommendations of the bipartisan Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding as published in January 2019. The WSAB further calls upon the legislature to provide an equal opportunity for every pupil to have a sound, basic education. Doesn't sound like a whole lot there, but there's a whole lot in saying that, a sound, basic education. There was one that was approved, pathway to licensure. One on early literacy assessments for English learners. This was probably one that was debated, the better part of a half hour, 40 minutes. And really, it just comes down, you know, really, how do we really assess and what makes sense? So I'll, yeah, I'll read it. The WASB supports the early literacy assessment, screeners and diagnostics required in the state law to be provided in an English learner student's home language in accordance with current best practices in assessment and instruction for bilingual program students. E.O. students tested in English should not be labeled at risk without verification that the student also fails an early literacy test in their home language. So as you see that, you know, you're not going to call them at risk because they failed in English, but yet they may very well be capable in their native language. So that was really pretty important to get through. Another one, early childhood education funding and public-private partnerships. The WSB supports state-funded public school 3K and full-day 4K for all Wisconsin children. The WASB also supports collaboration between public schools and other public agencies and programs, private childcare providers and Wisconsin institutions of higher learning. The WASB further supports district discretionary use of expanded Title I dollars to earlier grade levels by districts meeting the benchmarks for the National School Lunch Program, direct and categorical participation in 3K and 4K student households meeting income eligibility for the National School Lunch Program. So really, that's just tying the performance of the partnerships, early childhood and having full bellies. So that was another one that was a pretty important, and I think this is one. So as we look at, students are paramount, but what do we need? We need staff to teach them. And this one really speaks to that. The WASB supports legislation to fund statewide mental health initiatives for district staff in order to help improve staff mental health and increase retention rates. So, I mean, it's just kind of collectively, a lot of things are looking at. Just a couple more others I noted. Funding for meal debt.
Funding for what?
Meal debt. The WSB supports legislation that allocates money to reimbursed districts for the cost of unpaid school meal debt if they're feeding all students without stigma. That's the last one now, really. Just wanted to highlight a few of those. So once again, I will just say, as you know legislators, if we can bring them in, talk to them, educate them fully on what we need, what our students need, it would be a win. Thanks.
Thanks, Greg.
Part two.
That's why I paused. So committee meeting, couple, well, last week. So one of the things, and I appreciate that we ran through those couple of resolutions pretty quick. We actually had an exhaustive meeting and if you looked at it, you saw the level of detail, talking about, you know, what can we do? Little different because we have a lot of money to borrow. And always, one of the concerns is, you don't want to, well, I shouldn't say you don't want to, if you're earning more than you're paying, then there are IRS implications. And really, what we talked through is, what we'll be able to do is some vehicles that we can do and manage that are IRS acceptable. And quite frankly, those can earn whatever they want to earn, and even if it's beyond what we're paying, we still get to keep the proceeds. So our attorney that works through this, this was a unique situation for him. And he's been doing it 30-plus years, so it was a wonderful opportunity to give him an opportunity to learn something. So I just wanted to say that because it's, it could easily get glossed over how we ran through that. One of the absolute highlights of our meeting is Matt Sylvester Knutson talking about the process improvement and accomplishment that have been implemented over the last five years. And I'll hit just a few of those. Semi-automated invoice processing. Obviously, the whole S R piece, we know about that. The, what we don't get to see, but is talked about is the budget dashboards that individual buildings work and department. We didn't have that before then. So it's a way better job of being able to just simply manage the finances to a much better level than what we had before. Implementing a standardized point-of-service credit card reader system, still working through that, but you'll see that in more places. As money flows through, that'll be a significant enhancement, particularly, I think about, we had a non-district one as when my son was a part of Craig Spotlighters and the show choir, we were upwards of 40 grand in one day. So it's something that's great to, for us to be able to manage and accept it where across the district. And then the compensation partnerships to understand, you know, where are we at in comparison to the other districts and to be able to put it together in a manner that at least we know where we're at in an understandable manner. Now, we have to work with that and see what we can do to improve overall compensation, but first of all, we know where we're at. So that's definitely better. And one of the not-so-pretty things of doing is cleaning up the general ledger. It was, I know, probably thousands of lines, and I'm not sure if it's down into the hundreds yet, but they're working to get there. So that was absolutely the highlight of where, what we talked about. The next thing to mention is, you know, the district revenue per student, you know, it's lots of different ways to talk about, you know, what's the revenue per student? Well, it all depends. And I'll just leave it at that. There's a whole presentation that goes into each part of how it depends. So maybe at some point, when we've gone through the same level of fidelity with the expense discussion, maybe Dan will do a shortened version for us as a full board, just to better understand that. Because it is, it seems simple when he breaks it down, but we know it isn't. So it's just, it's awesome. And my last piece, and this is part is really, it's under development and it makes sense. And it has the updating, the overall 10-year capital plan, where are we at? Well, until we passed phase one of the referendum and we've broken it down into three parts, then how does that fit into an overall plan of what are we going to do with the roughly million dollars that's within the operational budget? And then how is that setting us up to move into phase two and phase three? And if there's a four and a five, just whatever that looks like. So we just touched on it. Believe it was the meeting before, he talked about the, all of the roof sections that we have, which are over 100 different pieces. And we had the roof expert breaking it down to help us understand, you know, we can look at a school, but we can't see the roof. So as we may think about in addition, and in addition, and in addition, and in addition, and in addition, I'm just talking Craig here. Then it's all of those separate roof pieces that we have. So that was really, gave a great visual to help us better understand really where we're at. So any questions? Say aye.
When I saw the performance improvement on the agenda of FPG, that caught my eye and I asked Denise to send me the memo on it. And I don't think I've seen electronic or made this automated more times. That presentation's really good and your team did really, really, I mean, great work. I feel like you got us into the current century. You know, I mean, I can't even imagine how outdated all of those things were. There's the pages of bullets of what they did. It's really good. So great job. Thank you for including that.
Anyone else?
And the last answer, I can't let it get away and sound that well, is, but now with dashboards, then hopefully we will have access to one to be able to review the districts. So it's in the works? Not quite there yet.
Thanks very much. I just, I have a comment or question about the 10-year capital improvement plan. You said it's a work in progress. Of course, I looked at 25, 26, and is, do these numbers equate to the budget we're trying to approve? I mean, are these going to be real dollars? Or is this still moving pieces in here? And the reason I'm asking, can anybody guess what part of this plan I'm happiest about?
Athletics.
The athletics at Parker and Craig. I mean, there's a significant amount of dollars there. So can I count on that or are we still kind of? So that's still, we're still juggling?
I thought you were going to get away with not having to count the whole thing today. Leave it to Kevin.
You can count on it today, right? So, you know, it's, and what I mean by that is, is we don't necessarily know what the state budget, right, is really going to pan out to. So we're in a little bit of interesting times, dare I say. And so all, if we move forward and we receive the anticipated $325 per student we expect to receive, then we're great. But there are some perhaps potential federal funding issues out there that we need to navigate. So I will tell you though, that is where we are at today and that is the intent, everything else being equal.
That's a fair answer. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Future meeting dates and agenda items. I received one new agenda item from Commissioner Hayworth and Commissioner Paul, which the superintendent and I will review at our next agenda setting meeting or before, which is coming up early March, right? Agenda setting meeting?
Next week. That's early March, next week.
Oh, boy. Okay. So we'll review that. I just wanted to also mention, you know, we sent out all those policies regarding getting information, asking questions. It was just intended to review the fact that each board member has the privilege to request any information at any time, and the systems are in place to get that information as quickly as possible. You know, we have to keep in mind everybody else's work too, but it was just meant as a review. Nothing, nothing more than that. Nobody's doing anything wrong. Am I doing anything wrong?
I don't know.
All right. We got some future meetings coming up.
We do have future meetings coming up. The PPC committee will be meeting on Monday, March 3, at 4:30 PM here at the ESC. The Board of Education will meet again on Tuesday, March 11th, at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. And our Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting will meet on Tuesday, March 18th, at 3:00 PM here at the ESC.
We're adjourned. We're adjourned.